And we continue at 2:06 in the afternoon. It's the John Philip Show. Mr. Randy Wang's in Culver City.
Johnny, it's been a while. Let's see what's bothering our buddy Three-In Shrimp at public comment at the LA City Council meeting.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
What's up, my homie? What's up, dog?
That is quite an introduction.
What's up, my homie? What's up, dog?
If you've never seen him, by the way, he has a costume. He wears a giant pink hoodie and a red MAGA hat every time he goes.
I can honestly say I've never seen what the man looks like.
What's up, my homie? What's up, dog? Uh, let's start with item number 22. Um, this is talking about the Koreatown Youth and Community Center. And then I have a really concern about this because I heard so many requests that our Korean youth, they want to have access to free transgender surgery. However, the council president and our city attorney, because both of you are black, continue to deny the Korean youth and the Korean community to access a free of charge gender switching surgery. So this is very concerning because I'm aware that a city attorney and then a council president, they always provide a free gender change surgery to Latinos and blacks, but why not Koreans? This is very racist.
Sounds like he's very passionate about that subject. I can tell you this, he always comes through.
He's always got new material.
I wonder how he makes his money if he has time to go to every single council meeting and speak before the council.
Yeah, that one's confusing to me because typically the people that show up at LA City Council are unemployed or retired.
Or how about this category, unemployable?
Well, there is that too.
800-222-5222 is telephone number 1-800-222-5222. Well, there was quite a stir in Los Angeles when LA Mayor Karen Bass was asked if she would be willing to take a pay cut, given the fact that the city is broke and she is laying people off and cutting the budgets of various departments. She said that's something that she would be open to. As far as I know, there's no evidence that's been provided suggesting that she's moving on this in any way, shape or form.
No, she made that, she said that two weeks ago when she was asked by a constituent and she has not committed to any amount or any date as when that's going to happen.
But LA isn't the only broke city in the state of California. Other cities are broke and they're trying to figure out what they can do to balance their budgets. And constituents in each of those cities are scratching their heads saying, hey, how about if the politicians took a pay cut? And Randy, that question was recently asked in the city of San Diego.
And they got a very interesting answer. Even if the members of the city council and the mayor of San Diego, Todd Gloria, wanted to take a pay cut, they couldn't. What the hell does that mean? Oh, get ready for this. It's a fantastic investigation from NBC 7 in San Diego.
You've probably heard by now, the city of San Diego facing a budget deficit of about a quarter of a billion dollars, but it's not the only city with issues. Los Angeles is tackling a budget shortfall of nearly $1 billion.
That's billion with a B.
Not an M.
And this past weekend, LA Mayor Karen Bass announced she will take a pay cut and hold off unscheduled raises for her staff.
She hasn't actually committed to that and she didn't announce it. And one of our listeners actually got a video with her and said, hey, will you take a pay cut? And what did she say?
Can I get a picture?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Are you gonna be taking, are you gonna be taking a pay cut to help the budget?
Absolutely.
That's so passive aggressive.
And so far, not true. She's not taking a pay cut. The LA City Council's not taking a pay cut. Karen Bass's deputy mayors, I don't think they're taking a pay cut.
NBC 7 Investigates reporter Alexis Rivas asked San Diego's mayor and city council members if they're considering foregoing their raises in July.
Wait, they're getting raises?
Well, they do such great work.
San Diego has a $250 million budget shortfall. They're considering jacking up parking rates, closing down public bathrooms at the beach and banning bonfires, but the city council and Todd Gloria are getting raises?
Don't hate the player, hate the game.
This summer, San Diego's city attorney, mayor and city council members are all set to cash in on a scheduled pay raise. It'll mark the sixth one in five years.
Wait, what?
Wait, so one year they got two raises?
They have gotten six raises in five years.
Good work if you can get it.
Doesn't this stink of what happened at the city of Bell?
Kinda sounds like it.
And it doesn't appear there's anything they can do to stop it, even if they wanted to.
Okay, how does this happen?
Oh, I'm sure there's a scam behind it.
The world politics.
Retiree Mike Kavanaugh has called San Diego home for 22 years.
It is just a wonderful lifestyle.
A lifestyle that's getting harder to afford. So he pays attention.
Oh, wow.
To things like San Diego's $258 million budget crisis.
Eventually, the, the, the quality of life that we have is just not going to be there. And, uh, I, you know, I just like San Diego too much to see it go down.
It'll still be there, but the trash fees are going through the roof.
Oh, yes. And if you're wondering what life will be like if your city is horribly mismanaged, LA is the ghost of Christmas future.
Part of the city's solution are budget cuts and asking San Diegans to pay more, more for things like public parking. So he reached out to NBC 7 Investigates and he wasn't alone. Our team got emails from folks asking us to dig deeper into how the city spends our tax dollars in the first place.
That's why I reached out.
It is a fascinating thing, right? This is the most expensive state to be in. These are the most expensive cities to live in and all the cities are broke.
Not one of them, of the big ones, is not experiencing budget problems.
That's why I reached out to you and I was very surprised when I received the email.
And you know what happened here? What happened in San Diego is the same thing that happened in Los Angeles, same thing that happened in San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose. There were a lot of budget problems in the first year of COVID because obviously they locked everything down. And Biden gave such massive bailouts to cities, school districts, transit agencies, that they all ballooned their budgets expecting that money from the federal government to continue. And once it ran out, now all of a sudden they're all massively in the hole.
Well, and you combine that with the fact that all of the competent mayors that these cities used to have, whether it be Dick Reardon in LA, Willie Brown in San Francisco, in San Diego, they had a whole string of really good mayors. And now that they're termed out, they get these retreads from other aspects of politics who are termed out and looking for an office to run for. So they run for mayor even though they don't have that skillset and they do what you would expect from them. They make all of their benefactors very happy, whether they be public employee unions or interest groups or developers. And the will of the people, the good of the city be damned.
Some asked us how much city officials get paid. We thought that was a good question. So we asked the city for payroll records. San Diego's mayor makes $244,727 a year.
Less than Karen Bass, but that's still a hell of a lot.
That's a ton of money.
That means Mayor Todd Gloria makes more than the governor of California.
For a termed out state assemblyman, that's pretty good work.
And San Diego's nine-
It's a good thing Gavin married rich. He's on that pauper's salary of only 200K.
Although the father-in-law doesn't like him, right?
That's true.
And San Diego's nine council members take home $183,545 a year, more than members of Congress.
Members of Congress make about a buck 40. The Senate's like a buck 60. San Diego City Council, a buck 80. LA City Council, 220.
So that means they get paid significantly more than members of the state legislature.
Yes. Todd Gloria got a raise when he ran for mayor, big one.
Yeah.
They're all scheduled for another pay raise this summer. And just like the last five raises they've received since 2020, this year's pay bump will come without a public vote or public notice.
How does this happen?
Well, I'm sure it's on autopilot.
The reason they can do that and the reason they make as much as they do today is because San Diego voters approved it overwhelmingly in a 2018 ballot measure.
Oh, no.
Let me guess, it's another one of those measures where no one had any idea what they were voting on, yet they voted in it anyway.
Measure L was sold to San Diego voters in 2018 as an ethics package. And part of that ethics package was increasing the salaries of San Diego councilmen and the mayor and the city attorney every year for several years. Do you know what the salary for LA, for a San Diego city council person was before this bill? $70,000 a year. Now it's more than double that.
Well, that's ethical.
These are the only salaries in the city that have actually been voted on by the folks.
Bob Adely-
Yeah, did they know that?
I'm sure they didn't.
Bob Adely was the chief proponent and author of Measure L, the result of two decades of effort. Effort born-
Two decades of wanting to jack up the pay for local electeds?
That's commitment.
Effort born out of frustration, says Adely, from watching what he says were costly and incompetent deals out of city hall. Adely said many of the people serving on the council couldn't understand complicated city contracts.
So what makes you think you're gonna get better people increasing the pay for what is pretty much an entry level, local elected government job?
No, you're just gonna get more expensive jackasses.
We pay $220,000 a year here. Are we getting our best in the city of Los Angeles?
You know, let's criminalize catalytic converters, let's criminalize copper.
We can't even get ones that know the pledge.
Yeah, we get time for it.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. De Leon, can you please, um, lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning?
Thank you very much, Madam President. It'd be an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Uninvidable. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're definitely getting our money's worth.
And I sat down, I said, how do we fix that?
At the time, the city of San Diego paid council members less than $70,000 a year.
Which by the way is fine because that's like the average salary of someone that works there. Why exactly should a city council job be paying so well?
And let's be honest, for most jobs in local government, whether you're talking about city council, school board, water board, central committee for your party, whatever the case may be, those are typically regarded as being part-time jobs, as being volunteer sorts of positions where you're not supposed to enrich yourself from doing the job. It's just you providing public service to your community. At some point, we decided we were gonna go in a different direction and make it a way to get rich.
If you are untalented and you are not very smart, but you wanna make a lot of money, turns out the best way to do that is to sell your soul to the public unions and run for office.
Well, it's also changed the way that we elect people or changed the type of person, I guess I should say, that we elect. When you professionalize these jobs, and by that I mean you just need one jobs for you to pay your mortgage and pay all your bills. We went from basically letting attorneys run the state, whether it be in the state legislature, city councils, whatever. And we swapped the attorneys out for staffers, people who work for politicians, the politician terms out, so the staffer then runs for the job. You're not getting the dentist, you're not getting the small business owner, you're not getting the firefighter, you're getting the people who work for the politicians because now they can make a career out of it. That's not improving the level of government that you receive.
In theory, council members could have voted to raise their salaries, but in practice, the move was unpopular.
Well, they didn't want to get Robert Rizzoed.
No, they didn't.
But it was a mess and it had to be fixed.
So Adely looked at how elected officials in Las Vegas successfully raised their position salaries.
You look to Las Vegas as a sign of a place where politics isn't crooked at all?
This man prides himself as being a stickler on ethics?
I realized that they made it more attractive to voters by eliminating all those perks that nobody knew about.
Perks like car allowances and hundreds of thousands of dollars in premium event tickets.
So what, the, the title and the language of the bill was take the Padres tickets away from the city council? Oh, by the way, we're doubling their pay?
Well, they can take away the Chargers tickets while they're at it.
I think at this point, the Chargers were already gone. We're just getting started with this piece, Johnny, because, uh, San Diego voted for this and I guarantee most San Diegans had no idea.
How about Clippers tickets? Can they take that away from the San Diego City Council too?
They took those away 40 years ago.
I just saw a picture when they moved to LA, it was Donald Sterling and Tom Bradley with their arms around each other. If they only knew. If you'd like to email the show, you can do so at johnnydon'tlikeshow@gmail.com. That's johnnydon'tlikeshow@gmail.com. And Randy, you're monitoring the mailbag.
We take requests, as you know. If you ever want an MP3 of any of the drops you hear on the show, just ask us and I'll send them right to you. Patrick writes in at johnnydon'tlikeshow@gmail.com. Hey guys, can I get the no, I know from the Klein blotter? Shangy's absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Katie Porter's soundbite in the old folks home. Hey, hello, everybody.
If there are any dogs in that old folks home, can you imagine what kind of damage that would do to their ears?
Like, please?
And Randy, with the end of the show quickly approaching, if you want to continue listening to us after we sign off at 3, that's easy to do.
Let's say you've got a thing for, uh, Katie Porter Sound and you want to hear all the Katie Porter Sound. Go to the John Philip Show on Apple Podcasts. Go to the Apple Podcast app or go to Spotify.
I call it the shift gift.
Go to iHeartRadio. Search for the John Philip Show. Hit subscribe.
Little D.
You can download all the episodes.
Winner winner chicken dinner.
And you can educate yourself on the incredible career of gubernatorial candidate Katie Porter.
You wanna hear something frightening?
What's that?
If Kamala doesn't get in the race, Katie Porter is probably gonna be leading in the polls.
Little D.
Wanna hear something equally as frightening?
What's that?
If Kamala gets in, she'll be leading in the polls.
I will repeat myself.
Right now, we're figuring out just exactly how the mayor and council in San Diego, how they're paid so handsomely.
In 2018, San Diego city councilors were making $70,000 a year. Now they make 180 and they're getting a raise this summer, even though the city is facing a $250 million budget shortfall.
So how do you sell-
Here's NBC 7.
So how do you sell that to the voters? And ultimately, we sold it to the voters as an ethics package.
So there was a measure on the ballot that said, hey, we're gonna hold our local electeds accountable, we're gonna make them more ethical, no more concert tickets, no more Padres games, no more free car. But it also apparently more than doubled their pay.
You don't need to take the free Padres tickets if your salary is doubled, you could buy them yourself.
And is the idea here, if you pay members of local elected government enough, they won't be corrupt? Because can I point to exhibits A, B, C, D and E, the LA City Council over the last 20 years?
How many of them have gone to prison?
So in addition to raising San Diego elected official salaries to automatically align with San Diego Superior Court judges?
So if the judges get a raise automatically, the city council, the city attorney and the mayor get a raise every year?
What does one have to do with the other?
Good question.
Measure L also eliminated those car and sports ticket perks and barred city officials from taking lobbying jobs after leaving office.
And I'm sure that's enforced.
This, by the way, is why so many members of the state legislature can't wait to get out of that office and become members of the city council or board of supervisors. There's frequently, if you're talking about some of the big cities like San Diego, more money in city government than there is in the state legislature.
Look at Holly Mitchell. She spent nearly a decade in the state senate and as soon as she ran for LA County Supervisor, she almost doubled her salary because the supervisors make 300K a year.
And they can be there for three terms.
Ottilie's plan worked. Measure L passed overwhelmingly, 78% voted yes.
There is no way 78% of San Diegans had any idea that that was about jacking up the pay.
No, they had no clue what they were voting for.
The result, in his mind, has been a wild success with more qualified officials at the helm.
Um, reference?
You know, San Diego used to be one of the best-run big cities in California. When other cities had a homeless problem, San Diego really didn't have much of a homeless problem compared to, say, San Francisco or Los Angeles. And now they have termed out politicians from Sacramento running the show and now they're a mess too.
Now that his measure has more than doubled the salaries of elected officials in less than five years, we asked him whether he still supports it.
I mean, it's the least we can do.
What is this guy?
He's gotta be on drugs or something.
I mean, it's the least we can do. Quite frankly, I-
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
That's two today.
I mean, it's the least we can do. Quite frankly, I-
The least we can do is have members of the city council make way more than the average person that they represent?
Do you think that he's getting kickbacks or something or this guy is just that dumb?
No, this guy is a full-blown government insider. That, that, nobody just writes a ballot measure and collects signatures to jack up the pay of local electeds unless they're getting a piece of the action.
But they portrayed him as being some kind of ethics warrior.
I mean, it's the least we can do. Quite frankly, I think the number ought to go up.
No rational person that isn't compromised would ever say, look at our local electeds, they deserve even more money.
They blew the budget. Homeless people are everywhere. What objective metric can you use to say that they're doing a great job?
How many of the voters who voted in favor of this do you think really understood what it meant in terms of council salaries?
I don't know. I mean, that's a question. The answer to that question is the same to anything that goes on the ballot.
Idiot. You knew exactly what you were doing. You tricked the people of San Diego into voting for something that they would never otherwise even consider and then you're asked the question and you play dumb?
If you're gonna vote no on a ballot measure, you don't really need to do that much research on it. But it doesn't matter what it is, whether it's at the city level, the county level or the state level. If you're gonna vote yes, you need to do all the research you can because this kinda crap happens all the time and it's perfectly legal.
If you're this guy, why are you even bothering doing this interview? You think this is a good look?
Do you think when most voters read that, they really understood how much money council members and the mayors would then start making and how those automatic raises would work?
No.
Come on, America's finest city.
No.
NBC 7 Investigates reached out to all nine city council members and Mayor Todd Gloria. We didn't ask them about a pay cut, just whether they would consider not taking their next scheduled raise. The short answer was no.
Of course. And he's the one that puts out music videos in response to the hot topic of the day.
Gascon was doing that for a while too.
A couple of city council member offices questioned whether they could legally forego a scheduled pay raise. So we asked the city attorney's office and they got back to us. They said because Measure L made elected official salaries part of the city charter, it would require a voter-approved amendment to that charter.
This is insanity.
No, this guy made pay raises bulletproof and on autopilot.
Does it matter if the city's broke or if these people are, are morons or crooked? They get raises no matter what.
And this guy still thinks it's a good idea.
For any city council member or the mayor to forego a pay raise or give back a portion of their salary. Mayor Todd Gloria's communications director sent us this statement, quote, "The mayor's salary will remain consistent with the voter-approved salary setting formula."
Of course.
It's the perfect crime. It is the perfect crime.
Oh, but don't worry, they're gonna try to justify the hell out of this one.
Even as his workload expanded significantly with the assumption of the former chief operating officer's duties. By assuming this additional executive role, Mayor Gloria relieved the taxpayers of hundreds of thousands of dollars in salary and benefit costs.
No. You do not get to spin this as we're actually saving you money.
No, you gave yourself more power.
In addition, he reduced his staff by 10% and affected a departmental consolidation in-
How many staffers does Todd Gloria have?
Too many.
And affected a departmental consolidation-
I mean, that's the thing they don't tell you. The mayor's office, how many people working under there that are just advisors that get paid almost as much as the mayor, whether it's LA, San Diego? You also look at every city council person. They have top staffers that are making 200K as well.
No, this is, this is what happens in a one-party state. As I said before, that city was incredibly well-run under people like Pete Wilson. And they had the police chief Sanders as mayor there for a while. I think Susan Golding was there for a couple of terms. And it was a beautiful, clean city where it wasn't overrun by the homeless like other big cities in California, even when that started to become a problem. And then they dumped all the Republicans and they brought in this hack from Sacramento and he's behaving just as you would expect and the city's been run into the ground. And then they're congratulating themselves.
And affected a departmental consolidation in February that is saving taxpayers $5.3 million annually.
Todd Gloria, the city's $250 million in the hole and you want to close public bathrooms?
And the parking fees that are going up dramatically in San Diego, that they don't regard as a tax, they regard those as fees, but they're going after taxpayers that way too.
And don't act like we've gotten better government out of this. The city council in San Diego is pretty much bought and paid for by the developers, which is why they allowed legislation to make it so if you have a single-family home, you can build an ADU apartment building as tall as you want and not have to provide any parking. These people are great.
No, the people of San Diego are paying a fortune for very bad government.
Shouldn't we have very attractive salaries to recruit the best possible candidates?
That's not how it works when the only qualification to have the job is people elect you, which when you have low voter participation, I'll point this statistic out till I'm blue in the face, Eunice Hernandez got that job at the LA City Council in a primary with 16,000 votes. That's it. And she got four years of 220K.
No, and this is where if you're running for a local office and you run on the subject of abortion or Trump or immigration or Ukraine or whatever, subjects that have nothing to do with your job duties and you get elected because you appeal to the tribalism that now exists in California, you end up with people who are incredibly well-paid, who not only have no idea what they're doing, they don't have any interest in anything municipal. Their interest level is in national and international politics. That's what they spend their time on, that's what they think about, they have no ideas for your city.
Now that you're getting 183,000, are we really getting two and a half times better service?
We are not.
The answer is no.
Are our roads better? I don't see any difference.
I mean, hell, La Jolla is trying to secede.
Could you blame them?
Alexis Rivas, NBC 7 Investigates.
Now, when it comes to the city attorney, that salary is also tied to the same salary schedule, but since the city attorney already started at a higher base pay than the city council or mayor, that salary has increased by a smaller percentage comparatively.
But it's still getting a raise.
Oh, yes, they all are. What was it, six in five years?
City's bankrupt and every top member of government is getting a raise this summer.
And they are finding- And they are finding more ways to nickel and dime the people who pay the bills. And Randy, we have time for one more addition to the California crime blotter.
If the cashier is dummy.
Questions?
And this addition is, well, I guess we could call it a family affair.
It's a father-son car-buying scam duo. For more on this, we go to KCRA three in Sacramento.
Investigators are searching for other possible victims in a car-buying scheme, including a man and his teenage son. Both are in custody in Sacramento, accused of trying to cheat a seller out of thousands of dollars.
Okay, how did this work?
Son, here's how you make a living.
Detectives right now are more concerned that they've pulled this scheme, not only here in the Sacramento area, but throughout the state. KCRA three's Peyton Hedley explains what they're accused of doing and why it didn't work.
Oh. It hurts.
So not only are you teaching your son to be a rotten criminal, you're not even good at it.
Son, dad's not good at his job.
It hurts.
It's the latest case of a scheme KCRA three has covered in the past in Sacramento County.
People are so heartless and can take an advantage.
In Nevada County.
They were totally pro-like. They rehearsed this.
And in Placer County.
Boy, they're going all over the place.
Yeah, they're really hitting every county in Northern California.
While they were distracting the seller, the other person would pour oil on top of the engine.
People tricked-
Wait, what?
I guess you could call that a sleight of hand.
People tricked into selling their cars for drastically lower prices than they're worth.
It's almost like a magician where, you know, you look over here while I'm doing this over here.
Amar Gandhi with the Sacramento County Sheriff-
Not that Gandhi.
No, 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 no.
Amar Gandhi with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office says a man and his teenage son tried running the scheme on a 65-year-old man on Thursday.
They show up to the victim's residence, they examine the car, and while the victim's speaking to the 16-year-old, the father goes and while inspecting the car, sprays the engine bay with oil.
The suspects-
He's got a little, he's got a little spray bottle in his pocket?
The suspects claimed the car had major mechanical issues and convinced the man to lower the price from $10,000 to $6,000.
Oh, come on!
Okay, if they were caught, and we know about certain scams that they've pulled in Northern California, how many do you think there are that we don't even know about?
I'm sure this kind of stuff happens all the time. Even though you're going to get ripped off by selling your car back to the dealer, you don't have to deal with this crap.
You just get ripped off in different ways.
No matter what, when you sell a car, you get ripped off.
And then they didn't even pay that much.
Eventually, this kid does sleight of hand, hands him $3,800, purporting that it's $6,000.
Wait, so they scammed him twice?
Yeah, so first daddy sprays the car with oil to make it look like the car's a lemon. So then they say, okay, we're going to need a big discount. And then the son uses way too many bills in a confusing way to say, hey, here's six grand, and it's $3,800.
At what point do you just steal the car?
You would think that's easier. You get caught less when that happens.
I mean, here they've committed multiple crimes.
Finally, the victim gets fed up and says, hold on, this is all off.
Gandhi says the seller stopped the sale, then tried to take a picture of the duo.
When he goes to take this picture, the 16-year-old pushes him as they make their way out.
Oh, you can't do that.
No. It was a matter of time before these guys were caught.
That push is what turned this scheme into a more serious crime.
Being able to prove that a sale is being made under a false pretense is a crime. But again, it's the difficulty in proving all that. But being the fact that there was force used during this made it very easy to make the arrest.
How about the bottle, how about the bottle of oil this guy had in his pocket?
Yeah, doesn't that count for anything?
In a matter of hours, detectives arrested 41-year-old Gabriel Stefan Beebe and his-
Beebe? Mr. Beebe? And little Beebe?
Well, you can put them in the same holding cell. All in the family.